This conference will now be recorded.
Several of them, but.
It's gonna get an occurrence.
There's several back here talking.
Is this Tuesday?
I don't know. I don't know which is gonna be the better.
You the mayor tonight, mayor?
Not that I'm aware of.
Oh, right.
I haven't heard anything.
For the same reason. Kind of vibrations.
Oh, I doubt it. Probably. Would have been in communication with Mike.
I think they were all okay today.
That's a good question. Oh, vague.
Are they here?
Very vague. Oh, no.
Can they tell us who this?
I don't think, I don't think they know.
Not that that should matter, but.
I don't know how much we can.
We really can't.
Well, the meeting's. I hope he's okay. Should, is somebody calling him?
Mike's his babysitter. Wicked him up from his nap.
He's not a big guy.
He was up for the whole season.
Oh, man, that was, that was rough. Did you? Oh. Eli just stopped watching it.
It's gonna be a long, torturous season, and I'm not gonna watch much of it, I don't know. Well, I don't think it's just the defense. What was it? The average pass reception was like thirty or twenty-one yards or something?
So Joe said they stopped using, stopped using the running backs.
Is he on his way?
Yeah.
Which means what? He's twenty minutes? Oh, okay. Just let him. I appreciate it, but we'll let him. We'll let him. Is my mic on? Okay. Mayor McTaggart is on his way. We should be able to begin the meeting in just a couple minutes.
Heard a bunch of you better patting down.
I apologize. I was not paying attention to the time. Okay. October eleventh, City Council, be called order. Would you please stand for the pledge of allegiance and move outside. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. First item on the agenda, approve the consent agenda and statement of the bill paid in amount of two hundred and thirty-nine, three thirty-six oh one.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
It has been moved in second to approve the consent agenda as presented with this clerk please call roll.
Shriver?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Kahar?
Yes.
Malon?
Yes.
And next item on the agenda will be request or comments from the public. Would you please go to the podium and state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. My name is William O'Raas. I live at fifteen oh three North, one hundred and thirty-second Terrace in the Delaware Ridge subdivision. And I am part of the Delaware, or the Honor Springs, Edwardville School District. And I am not gonna talk and not here to run on the board because I believe that parents somehow have lost their voice. I believe in liberty, and so I hope that people will consider me for the school board coming up November second. That's my announcement.
Thank you. Anyone else? If there are no other, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda would be consider authorizing the city manager to enter into agreement with Oric and Erskine for right-of-way acquisition services related to Ninety-Eighth Street construction project.
Mayor, members of the City Council, good evening. This item is in relation to the Ninety-Eighth Street project, which you know we received funding for that would reconstruct Ninety-Eighth Street from Kansas Avenue to the north to approximately the city limit lines. As in all of these kind of projects, they do require the acquisition of right-of-way permanent drainage easements and temporary construction easements. We have typically used Oric and Erskine's. It's a legal firm that specializes in right-of-way acquisitions. They perform the work on our KDOT project related to One Hundred Tenth Street and other work forces as well. They have provided an estimate to do the work of seventy-one thousand, three hundred dollars. Those fees would be paid for out of the project fund. They are not eligible for matching federal funds. We have to meet all the federal requirements in our acquisitions. That does include all of the appraisals, so approximately a third of the dollars or better is in the appraisal work, so we have to do appraisals. And then if they're more than ten thousand dollars value, then we have to do a second appraisal, review appraisal. And then there's also obviously the recording fees. Some of those are harder to determine, so they estimate what the recording fees are. And then their fee to send out all the letters, go out there, maintain all the proper documentation, prepare the records that we have to maintain, ensure we're in compliance with KDOT. It would be our recommendation to retain Oric and Erskine, specifically Tim Oric, who worked on our last project for us. I think he had somebody else in the firm that works with him as well on that project, some of his staff, legal staff, support staff. So that is our recommendation. It is estimated at seventy-one thousand, three hundred. It could be slightly more or less. Generally depends on, you know, if there's something unusual or, you know, filing is twenty pages versus ten pages, those kind of things would change it. That is our recommendation and happy to answer any questions.
Is this something that we would be able to get other bids or estimates from different companies? For I know there aren't very many.
There are a couple of firms out there. I think the benefit of Oric and Erskine besides us, they do, they unify government, they do BPUs, and they're very familiar with this area, this region. For us, and have had a productive record. We had another firm that worked that did a good job, but I think overall, I think that they've done an excellent job for us as far as all the record keeping. A lot of it is that record keeping, keeping in compliance with KDOT, so not every firm is used to doing that. Some firms don't do the appraisals, so then we have to go out and go through the appraisal process. The benefit is they pretty much handle it from beginning to end.
And the other ones in the area don't work with KDOT or handle the record?
There are other firms, legal firms, that will do that, do that portion of it, and obviously the appraisers have to be on KDOT's approved list for doing the appraisal work. So there are other firms out there. Again, we've worked with Oric and Erskine. From a pricing standpoint, again, the appraisals are pretty much what the appraisals are. Those are pretty, everybody charges roughly the same. I mean, a hundred dollars give or it's maybe on an appraisal, so pretty, pretty set. But yes, there are other firms, but we've used them on a number of projects and very satisfying.
How many properties are involved, Mike?
There are twenty parcels that I believe that represent seventeen property owners, because there are some parcels that have the same, have, have the same ownership, but they still have to be treated as separate aisles. So effectively, their charge is two thousand dollars per parcel is what they're charging for their work from, again, from the point of sending the initial letter out that says we're doing the project, making the appraisers available to the property owners, any and all consultation with the property owners, and then preparing documents and getting a file. We have to pay the filing fee, but that includes them taking care of the electronic filings, et cetera.
How's the property owned by KDOT? How's that handled?
Well, those are, those won't require any acquisition services related to that. Now, if there's property adjacent to that, that requires like a temporary construction easement or something of that nature, then we would have to deal with that private property. We don't have to do, unless there was some reason we wanted to acquire that right-of-way, which I believe there's any reason we want to acquire that right-of-way. There's, there's no action required to use that property. It'd be part of the plans.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Obviously get signed off by KDOT.
Right.
Did you say the appraisals are about one-third of the price?
Yeah, I mean, I can tell you that the, so, so they set the appraisal, so there's two different types of appraisals. There's one that's called a value and acquire appraisal, and the other one is a short form. So the value and acquire appraisals are, I think they got these, are generally when they exceed ten thousand dollars. No, I take it back. When there are less than ten thousand compensation. And then we have twelve of those, and then we have eight that are the, I still think they have this backward on the email from value and acquire versus short form. But we have eight that would be over ten thousand, or we estimate it to be, again, we may get the appraisal back and it's nine thousand, nine hundred, we estimate it at ten. So would it change it? And those are fifteen hundred dollars for appraisal.
Okay.
And then the review appraisals are seven hundred and fifty dollars each.
I'm just wondering, and, and maybe it's, it's not worth it, but if we're looking at over forty thousand dollars, would it be worth just getting an estimate, reaching out? Not to the people who you've not had a great relationship with or haven't done well before, but just once in a while, reaching out to get estimates from other companies to make sure we're getting the best value for our dollar?
I mean, we can, I just, I mean, just dealing in this, I mean, I don't think you're going to see, at least people that are specialized in this type of work. The city could quote do it, but I will tell you, having done a small project where we only have four or five parcels, it is very time consuming.
Right, well, and I'm not asking necessarily that the city do it. I just, I wasn't going to get into it, but I've had property owners have negative interactions with this particular firm, and so I thought it might be worth reaching out, doing due diligence, and making sure.
And I will say this, I, I know we had, I think it was more on the sewer project that we had, and that individual isn't engaged on our projects, so.
Well, it was the last two separate projects I've had people just, so I just, I think once in a while it's a good idea, but.
Call by the council, you want us to go back out and obtain quotes, we could certainly do that. And again, I think they've done, I mean, I realize not every property owner is always happy, but, but I mean, I mean, it's a, it's a pretty specific process. For example, you have, which is not unusual, somebody says, well, I think my property's worth more than that, right? Well, it's not just, then we can go and say, okay, we'll give you more money. There has to be something to support why it's different than what a licensed appraiser said. And again, it's different than an appraisal that you might have when you have a residential house done, right? It's actually a market appraisal. This is basically, you know, they compare it to, you know, three or four properties, the value of the land, because that's what we're looking at, right? We don't, we don't anticipate any full takings. A full taking is where you can acquire the land and the house and all that. That's a much more complicated. Just make that being at all in this case. So really what you look at is what was the value of the land prior, and based on this project, what impact does it have on the land? And that's the difference. I mean, in some cases, you have times when actually the impact may make it more positive, right? But you still generally have a payment, because you're generally looking at square footage values and then going from that, saying, okay, we're taking, you know, a ten-foot strip by, by a hundred feet long. So, you know, that's a thousand feet or whatever, and we're paying fifty cents a foot, that's what the value is. I'm just making up numbers, so please don't anybody think me, I don't know what the numbers are. And that's the value. And, and, and short of, oh, by the way, you know, it's gonna impact this hundred-year-old oak tree, and you didn't take that into consideration. Those are kind of, maybe there's, you know, we ran into situations where there's something on that property, we just, nobody told us, right? I mean, the property owner may have not said anything until later in the process, oh, by the way, there's this thing out here. Oh, okay, well, we need to reassess it.
I make a motion to authorize city manager to enter into agreement with Oric and Erskine for the right-of-way acquisition services related to Ninety-Eighth Street reconstruction project in the amount of seventy-one thousand, three hundred dollars.
Second.
It has been moved in second to authorize the city manager into an agreement with Oric and Erskine for right-of-way acquisition services related to Ninety-Eighth Street reconstruction project in the amount of seventy-one thousand, three hundred dollars. If there's no further discussion with the clerk, please call roll.
Shriver?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Kahar?
No.
Malon?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is consider recommendation of approval from the planning commission regarding following items. Rezoning of one hundred and six hundred Caldwell Drive from C-two Commercial Retail District to C-three Commercial, General Commercial District, and approval of ordinance number ten forty-five, finalizing the same. Do we do, deal with these all separately?
Yeah, so we, we actually have five or four separate items, just so, but we'll, we'll deal with them, but we'll, we'll start with the rezoning. Then we will address the development plan and then the final plat, that's all the city council hears. So the way we're gonna proceed tonight, this was, this was a little more complicated than maybe some of them we've had in the past, so we're gonna start off. Bradley's gonna kind of give an overview of what the project is and what's being asked, and then we may ask the applicant if they have any comments that they just wanna make generally about the project. I mean, they're already gone to planning commission's public hearing, so it's not a public hearing, but just to make sure everybody understands what the bigger project is, and then we can get into discussions and staff.
Bradley Hoekaber, city planner, city of Edwardsville. Good evening, mayor, members of the council. We have a series of applications before us this evening, all of which were recommended for approval by the planning commission at their September fifteenth meeting. Twenty twenty-one oh three Z is an application requesting to change zoning from C-two Commercial Retail to C-three General Commercial. Twenty twenty-one oh four FPT is a request to subdivide thirteen acres of land to form one ten-acre lot where majority of the proposed development will be located and a three-acre tract land intended for open space and stormwater compliance. Twenty twenty-one oh five PPN FP, FPN is the proposed development consisting of a thirty-two thousand square foot building along with associated drives, parking, and infrastructure to support an office building and fleet vehicle maintenance and distribution center. As Michael said, the, the item before you will require four separate actions, one for the zoning, one for the final plat, one for the preliminary development plan, and one for the final development plan. The site is located at Tick ten six hundred Caldwell Drive. As you may know, this property is owned by McNanny Construction, which was recently used for the excavation of soil, soil materials. That being said, the owner is Eric Bossman of MB Two Land Inc. The applicant and developer who is here this evening alongside his architect is Kevin Tubusine of Stag Commercial. As I mentioned, the site's approximately thirteen acres, Zone C-two. Around the side is predominantly Zone C-two and C-one with residential to the north, some residential homes to the east along with Edwardsville United Methodist and Edwardsville Christian Church. To the west is more single-family residential as well as Lake of the Forest. As Michael mentioned, the first item we'll be looking at is zoning. The zoning request is from C-two to C-three, and the packet you'll find a table comparing the permitted uses of C-two and C-three. I'd like to point out through this line in particular, that the request from C-two to C-three, in this case, it's allowed for uses relating to vehicle services. While most of these uses are allowed within the C-two district, they typically require a special use permit. Most of the other kind of maintenance uses, i.e. maintenance services, mechanical sales, maintenancees, and repair is only allowed in C-three. The proposed hu, the proposed use here is a service center facility with a corporate office. A good example of this, maybe something like Bob Hamilton or even Google Fiber, where employees will come in in the morning with their personal vehicles, park, receive their assignments for the day, and then go into the field with a service vehicle. Rather than having to send these vehicles off-site for repairs, the facility will allow the tenant to service these vehicles for minor repairs and general maintenance. It should be noted that through the zoning change, the use will be restricted, but the type of vehicles will not. However, the applicant has agreed to restrict the types of vehicles by including language on the final plat. These restrictions will allow for Class Seven vehicles and below with no more than three axles. All vehicles must be able to, under their own power, use public streets, reach highway speeds, and they cannot be towed, meaning there will be no tractors or trailers stored on the property. In addition to these restrictions, sewer engineered documents are to be prepared and submitted to the city for approval prior to the filing of the final plat. And all public improvements, including sanitary sewer, will occur in conjunction with the construction of the site. With that being said, all interviews are applicant. Who can speak a little bit more on the project and maybe answer any questions you may have?
So Kevin Tubusine, Shawnee, just south here. The project, I won't say it myself, but one of your planning commissioners, we said probably will be the more attractive buildings in Edwardsville. I agree, we try to bring you a really great project here. Use three sixty architecture across the property so that you'd be able to see the architectural metals on the front. Even as we went to the back, we used a high-end material also for the shop area. The intent of this is to be a kind of vehicular fleet, a distribution center, not a distribution center from what you're used to hearing about with, you know, big trucks delivering Amazon such and whatnot. It's really just so, you know, a company that has company vehicles and store their stuff, their vehicles there at night, or their employees will show up in the morning, probably get their morning briefing, get into the vehicles, and after the day, what they do, and then come back. So that's the general intent here. It's probably very similar to how the police department works, for example. I'm not sure if you're allowed to go home or not with your cars, but, but that's the idea. And then, you know, and we, but we also wanna be able to, whether it's changing the oil, changing the tires, et cetera, et cetera. It's not, there's no outside vehicles, it would just be the company's vehicles themselves that are being moved on. There's not a repair center. Probably would have standard questions if you have any. I'm not sure that the staff report, you know, went pretty in-depth into the whole process, but.
How many vehicles do you imagine would be on site?
That would just go back to the parking, because you don't be able to do what the vehicle parks, plus the personal vehicles that are brought in. So my guess is you're probably sitting on around fifty to sixty vehicles potentially could be there.
Including personal vehicles?
That was, no, the company vehicles, then, you know, so the personal vehicles, if you will, will surge in in the morning, surge out at night. They would occupy them and take the company vehicles off-site.
How many employees?
So some of the numbers I gave to staff, I mean, the, the nice part about this, of course, is the fourteen. So the fourteen thousand square feet of office is gonna bring a whole lot of daytime workers to Edwardsville, which, if you're not too familiar with the term that we use in real estate, of daytime workers, it's folks that go to lunch and support your restaurants and whatnot, so that some of your daytime businesses can get some more revenues. I did not, I know they're in the report, I did not bring the dollar amounts that were provided to us in the study as far as the, the amount of daytime payroll that is in there. Sorry, I don't like memorizing numbers, I get them wrong usually. But you have not only that staff, though, that's, that's permanent daytime staff on two layers of office, but then you also have some folks that, of course, that'll work in the maintenance area in the back, in addition to the drivers that come and go.
So approximately?
Well, if you look at.
Sorry, I.
I just didn't wanna counter with my number, Mike. That's okay. So in fourteen thousand square feet of office, by and large, you apply two hundred and fifty square feet to any individual. That's fifty-six daytime employees. And then plus in the maintenance, you know, area in the back.
And do you know which company is planning on coming in? Do you have someone already?
We're negotiating with three different groups right now, so we have not, because we don't know we're approved for. I can't sign a lease with somebody until I'm approved to actually do something with somebody. So the, one of those group, whatever group we end up finalizing with, still has to do exactly this. What you guys are approving still has to do exactly this. If they wanna do anything different. If they want to do anything different, they have to come back to you. You have to come back.
At the present time, there's two cuts into the curb off of 32 Highway, correct?
I don't know the answer to that. I know that we're going to change it, only have one.
There was a, there is the cut that was going to the residence that, that, that's there that will be going away. And then there was a temporary construction easement further to the west, but that had been, same basically removed. I mean, that had to be, that's a KDOT access, had to be once the temporary use of the site, that removal of the soil. So they went in and reseeded it, et cetera, and maintained it. It's not like the front yard, but yeah. But there's only going to be one, I, you know, one access. If I may, I just.
Would you, would you put the mic so people can hear?
Yeah, just so I, I may, and I, it is. So just, just so we're staying on track here a little bit, just so the first item here is about the zoning and the, and so it's use, right? So what, what can it be used for? And I know these other questions are, are important and I'm not discounting them. Some of those are dictated by the site plan and/or the plat. So just, I want to make sure we're staying, you know, under the zoning, which is, you, you could rezone property and not have a site plan or not have a particular use at that time, but you want to get a higher or better use for the property because it's in keeping with, you know, a vision of either the city or the applicant. So in, in this case, that, you know, I, I know we've shown final plat, we've shown building elevations, which are important, but it's really the use of this going from the C2 and, and moving it to C3, which if we could put that slide back, you know, really what you're, what you're saying in this particular case is all the things that are typically, that are already permitted on this site are permitted on this site. The new items are effectively that they can do auto vehicle repair service or anybody. The current zoning only allows a limited, a very limited use of, of that type of repair. As a proposed, you have a, a facility where they will be doing maintenance of their vehicles, but yet it requires this zoning. Again, that gets into the maintenance service area. And I don't know how much the mechanical sales, maintenance, repair comes into play, but, but again, if you're going to move to C3, it's going to come in there. I, I'm not quite sure what would fall under mechanical sales, but I assume things like air conditioning or, or, you know, water sale, you know, water pipes, I mean, I, I would assume those might fall under this mechanical sales area. Maintenance repairs, maintenance and repairs, you might typically. The other two, professional office and service and parking commercial are already a permitted use in that zone. So everything about the office, really the building would be permitted. It, it's really the use of that facility for vehicle maintenance.
Are we looking at moving that one, the whole property or just the 10 acres to a C3?
The whole property, it's just that the northern tracks are undeveloped. So we put it into a kind of a common area track. That's not part of the actual.
Okay.
We don't want to, that goes back to, you know, some private residence and whatnot. There's no reason.
Looks like a creek runs right down the center of it.
Yeah, there's no reason.
And, and the, and the site plan would dictate, so the way that their plat and site plan show, they will, they'll create two lots. Actually, they'll create a lot and a track. So tracks are designed for stormwater, undeveloped areas typically is why you have a track. But it then requires this property to maintain that track A. So if there's issues, it, it's not just out there, right? It's part of the single property and the site plan also dictates the stormwater and some of those other items on, on the site plan when we get to them, so.
I'm not familiar with classification of vehicles. Can you explain the limits you're putting that you're agreeing to?
Yeah, so I mean, the, the city had concerns that we were entered into like an Amazon distribution center or like nothing with trucks coming in and out of it that are housed there and based there or other towed apparatus. And like McNanny Construction who owns the property right now. And so I wanted to make sure that we were assuring you that's not who we're targeting by any means. You know, we're just targeting just typical fleet vehicles. I'm not saying a fleet vehicle, you know, it could be a Ford sedan for the salesperson. And it could be, you know, kind of a, a truck that has some kind of a crane or boom on it, a thing up to the back like a, like a DPU, you know, repair vehicle, for example. It would be a heavier duty vehicle. But we, the reason why we wanted to limit it to three axles is we just have no intention of it being a bigger vehicle than that. So we're just trying to assure you that, you know, we're focusing on smaller.
By, by three, you mean the front and two rear?
Correct. But i, if I might, so, because this bounced around a lot. So the FHWA Federal Highway Administration, right, classifies vehicles from your passenger car to, you know, the largest thing that might drive on a road. And they classify it in two ways. One of them is basically on axle, axle spacing. So, and this is where we got into this. So class seven, which, which was the early recommendation, allows four or more axles on a single unit. And clearly, I think both parties said no. That, so, so then we started looking at class five, which is where the staff had proposed to the planning commission. But there was some issues about, well, does that limit weight of vehicle? So the FHWA also classifies vehicles by weight. And again, they say classification. So, so they use the word classification for axles and then weights. So when you look at a class seven vehicle by weight, so forget what type of vehicle it is and it doesn't necessarily mean axles, but by weight, a class seven vehicle is up to 33,000 pounds. You go down, so when we talked about class five and, and correct me if I'm wrong, Kevin, you know, the concern is class five limits you to, I think, under this research, to 19,500. So these are all federal classifications that we were trying to find a mechanism to put it, how we would limit it. Again, zoning, and we had this discussion with our, with our legal counsel, there's, there's nothing in our zoning that talks about weight limits of vehicles, right? So we can't just add things that aren't in our ordinance. But by putting it on a plat as a restriction, now that, that, that's, that is something that can be done, which is our recommendation. So by having a plat restriction, if in the future, anybody came to use that property and we're violating that, our authority is you're violating the plat. And, and we have, I won't say we have just unlimited, but it certainly gives us much more authority on a plat to enforce that limits. Now, we're not talking about the road, right? I mean, K32 is classified as a, as a state route. I don't know what its vehicle weight limits are, but I would, I would assume it exceeds, you know, pretty much all major. I mean, we know 18 wheelers can go down there, dump trucks, you know, fully loaded things. We're talking about the site and it's really about the use of how it's going to be used in this case. But we're using plating as that mechanism to restrict and say, we don't want, you know, you know, eight wheeled dump trucks coming out of there and leaving loads up on the site or things like that, right? And so I think the, the broad agreement is, how do we do that? And what are those limitations, which I believe I put in the staff report that we, we can either, and, and again, the applicant stated their, their acceptance. So we can, we can simply say we're going to limit it to axles and we're not going to limit a weight, but by, but somewhat by limit, no, by the number of axles limits your weight. I mean, how much weight can you put on a three axle or a two rear axle? I don't have an answer to that. You know, apparently, you know, you, you could do 33,000 pounds on, on a dual axle. You know, I say a dual, two rear axle.
I think the general idea is that we were willing, if things, if some future user wanted to come to you, you know, for more permission or whatever, we were fine accepting this kind of light, you know, limits. And if somebody had something that was more intense, it would be up to you whether you accept it.
At the public, a public hearing for the planning commission?
Yes.
Was there any objection? Was there anybody there that objected to?
We did not have any, the, the only public speaker that we had was adjacent to this property to the east. And there, they weren't objections, they didn't raise any objection. They basically raised two issues which are being addressed. And that was really the site lighting, which they'll have to provide a site lighting plan that meets our, our requirements and hours of operations. And we don't have anything in our ordinance that specifically states a limit on hours of operations in our city for a commercial use. So, I mean, you know, we do for like liquor or things like that because there's some statutory, but we don't have anything that says businesses in Edwardsville can only be open until a certain hour of the night. We don't have that in our code of ordinances.
Where else do we have C3 in Edwardsville? Where's the nearest property?
I, well, I, we did, I'm trying to think, the only other C3, and I'm trying to remember if we did it when we did the, the person that was going to do the wedding venue up the road. We, the only other C3 that I'm absolutely certain of is on the north end where the Hard Rock Hotel was to be located. And that is a C3 property that went through zoning. C3 is a relatively new zoning category that got put in during our last, our last zoning update. And it was trying to find some separations between kind of a medium duty use to a, a little bit heavier use. On K32, you know, we have mostly C2 use. We have some I1 use on that corridor as well.
Well, and that, that's kind of what I wanted to ask about. I think it's fantastic that we have folks wanting to invest in Edwardsville and businesses wanting to move in. But I know that we had a business come to us just on the other side of K32, very close, that we turned away because we didn't feel like it necessarily lined up with the vision of what the K32 corridor was hoping to turn into eventually and having, and when I've talked to folks lately, asking for shoulders on the road and sidewalks for the bicycles that go from Kansas City to Lawrence or people wanting to go from Edwardsville to Bonner. And, and so with us turning the one business away because it didn't fit the vision, could you tell me why this one is different?
Well, I don't know that I can answer your question. It, I, I can say that on the, on the, the other project that, that ultimately did get withdrawn by the applicant, they were, they were doing, proposing a commercial fueling station and overnight truck parking on that site. So that was, you know, next to an existing, that existing fuel station there, the BP station, which is basically a legal non-conforming use because they do have auto repair there, which now would, would fall under the C3. So there, but they're a legal non-conforming because they've been in place prior to the zoning. So that, that app, that, you know, that application was somewhat, somewhat different in that it was going to allow heavy trucks. I, I say heavy, talking about 18 wheeler, you know, trucks in and out of fuel and for overnight parking. Other than that, I can't really.
By overnight parking, do you mean sleeper trucks?
Correct. They could, that, they were proposing their site to allow drivers to stay on site. And that was the proposal.
What did the traffic study indicate as far as if we're talking 50 or 60 vehicles and we don't know the size of, pulling out onto K32 at an unsignaled location?
We just had such low traffic that it was acceptable to get up.
The project had such low traffic? So 50 or 60 vehicles pulling out of there, is, is it, is all at one time? Is it staggered throughout the day?
It would be staggered over about, probably about a two hour period in any of these given groups.
So they had a, which is required, traffic impact study done. And they're showing, so, so as you know, you know, the, the studies look at total, but they really look at the impact hours being a, a morning or an AM peak and an evening peak. And they compare it to the, the background. So there, they showed that they expected, I believe, 401 total weekday trips. The peak hour morning had 66 with 49 of those in and 17 outs, which is what we would expect, right? People coming into the workplace in the peak hours in the morning. And then the evenings, 78 with, with 25 in and 53 out. It expects that about 75% of that traffic will be going east and 25 west, which again, I think is what we would expect. So most of the traffic will be turning across the road and heading to the east is the most common traffic movement that's anticipated. One of the requirements that we have, have put in with the, I don't remember if it's on the planning or the, the site plan, is that we want a 24 hour count with speeds there, a speed study with the intent that we will file with KDOT a request to reduce the speed limit an additional distance. Because right now, basically where the proposed driveway is, is where the speed changes from 45 to 55. And so to move that further west, but obviously that's a request we have to make to KDOT. But the applicant has agreed to provide the speed study that's necessary for that and to be a partner in support of that.
And what, what happens if that is denied?
It, it, it just, I mean, we.
We've approved, you know.
Right. I mean, we, we don't have, I mean, ultimately if KDOT says yes to a reduced speed limit, then we have to pass an ordinance reducing the speed limit. We just don't have the authority on a KDOT route to alter the speed limit without their approval. So yes, if, if for some reason they came back and said, no, we're not going to do it, then the speed limits would stay as the speed limits are.
Well, I know that there's been talk in, in the past of, you know, getting the speed limit reduced through there and I'm not opposed to that at all. I mean, I think that that stretch definitely could use that. Reduce, reduce speed, but I, I don't, how, what's the process time wise that we would know if KDOT, KDOT was amenable to, to this? And why, why, I mean, we're kind of like we're doing something before, putting the cart before the horse here. If we know, if we know that KDOT says yes, this is something that we would entertain, then that get, gets us at a more of a comfort level of having an unknown sized vehicle. It sounds like we're talking about anything from a two door car to a dump truck. I mean, if pulling out onto K32.
Could I be clear that the KDOT study did it, you know, said the vehicles of, of those various sizes, but it, it did say at the current speeds, it was an acceptable solution.
And I think what we're saying is it's not. KDOT can say that and we have the ultimate authority in what happens in whether we approve or not.
So I think part, so part of the, the, the study, and it was submitted to KDOT as well. So because they've been working with KDOT on the driveway location, so I think that came up before. So it's KDOT's recommendation that the driveway be aligned with the driveway across the street, which is the one I believe that enters into what we typically refer to as the dentist office, that, that office building right there. So that there be an alignment of driveways, which is for safety purposes, the right, the right message. So, but it is correct, they did look at Kansas, KDOT's access management policies for separations of driveways and speeds, et cetera. That is included in their, the traffic study.
Mike, what is the traffic count? You've told me before, what is the traffic count on 32 Highway daily?
It's, uh, I, around twelve thousand vehicles per day.
That's what you say.
Twelve to thirteen thousand vehicles per day. I mean, I haven't looked at the most recent, but it's in that.
I don't believe that. I live on that highway and there's more cars than that to go by there. There's like the trains, they say there are sixty trains, but there's more than that.
I, I will say that in, in addition to that, so.
I'm just being argumentative right now.
It's about twelve to thirteen thousand a day and roughly eight percent of those are what they consider heavy vehicles, which are generally your semi multi, your, your, you know, your multi-axle vehicles, right? It's about eight percent.
We'll have to have a sidebar on that sometime because I disagree with those specs altogether. I'm concerned with no D cell lanes for one thing, because that's a, it's a nightmare intersection down there, the way Fourth Street is. And the way it's going to be when the silent crossing comes in, it's going to have specific closed down. It's going to direct a lot of traffic up to the highway to make a turn to go right into the, the quick trip mark right next to it by the dollar store. It's going to have people turning into the dollar store there. There's no D cell lanes on the north, north lanes to turn north into that. You know, I'm just, I think it's just going to be a traffic nightmare to have that. And I don't think we've defined very well what the class of the vehicles are that are going to be going in and out of there. And the number of the vehicles that are going to be going in and out of there kind of during the peak traffic times. There's, I'm absolutely not against having the company move into Edwardsville, but I just don't know that that's the right place for that kind of traffic to be generated. And I'm not sure that I'm convinced on what type of services are going to be inside that building as far as taking care of the vehicles. And the other question that I have is, is the office space speculative or is it going to be vacant? It looks like we've got some vacant buildings up at Plaza West right now. So there's a lot of concerns that I'd like to be able to think about for a while before I sit here and try to make any kind of decisions on this right now. So that's kind of where I stand on that at the time. So if you want to comment on that, it's fine.
We lose control of the property on Thursday. It either has to be approved.
I can't hear you.
You lose control of our contract on Friday, actually. So we either have to be approved and to, to close on Friday or we have to terminate. We've been working with staff with this for months and really think we're bringing you a wonderful five million dollar project with a whole lot of employees and a great project for your city. And I, I'd love to answer any questions you have.
Yeah, well. I appreciate the project coming in here, but I, I don't feel comfortable making any kind of a decision right now on that. So.
If I, if I may not to give you, but just so you know your decision options on, so again, narrowing it back down, we're, we're looking at the zoning is the only item that we're looking at, at this point. So you, you, you have a recommendation of approval from the planning commission. And I believe that was unanimous.
It wasn't exactly.
So your, your options, which all kind of end up being the same. So your options are you can accept the planning commission's recommendation. You do that by a simple majority of the governing body, governing body being all six members. So simple majority is a vote of four. So we're clear. You, you can, you could obviously deny it, uh, again. So if you take other than the planning commission's recommendation, so you really have the options of deny or revise. That takes a two-thirds majority, which again is four of the six is two-thirds. And the last option is you can't remand it back to the planning commission, but you need to be specific as to what, why you're remanding it back, right? So you, you need to have the specific question that you're, that you're asking. I would say that if the decision is to deny, you need to look at, and it's in your packet, you, under the zoning analysis, there's what's known as the golden rules of the thirteen criteria that we use. You should refer to those as to, you know, as you look at that decision, just, just so we're all on the same page.
Mike, are there any locations, like it seems like it'd be a perfect fit in the industrial park? We have, we have different sections of, of Edwardsville. Some are really residential, agricultural. K thirty-two, I feel like in, in our planning before, and, and remind me maybe what that plan was called when we were looking at the vision of what that could be in the future. Um, and we were talking about smaller retail and, and site, you know, um, off-road bike paths and, or things like along those lines. What I, what I don't want to do is have empty spots in the industrial park while we're making more of an industrial area up on K thirty-two. Are there open areas in the industrial park where businesses like that might fit?
Uh, there are some sites, um, I mean, I, and again, I don't know what the, the, this site, I mean, while I know it's twelve or thirteen acres, I think it's six to eight.
The entire property is about twelve.
Yeah. So, so I think it's a sixth, we'll just say six to eight acres, kind of their, their, oh, the developed part of the site on this particular site. Obviously each site has, has its own issues when it comes to detentions and things like that that can change the sites. So are there properties there? There, there probably are. Obviously, I don't know what those prices are, whether, whether those were reviewed or not reviewed. I mean, I, I don't.
Well, I don't want to turn down businesses coming into Edwardsville. I'm just saying, are we even competing now with vacant spots at the industrial park that we need to try to get filled?
Remember that more than half the people who work here are office. We're not trying to be in an industrial park. It's, you know, everything you see from the road is an office building.
Right. Well, I'm looking at sixty trucks coming in and out. So, I mean, that's not retail either. And, and what we're, Mike, what was that plan that we?
You're, you're, well, we did, we did two different plans. The first one was the, was the tri-city multimodal plan, which looked at the corridor basically from, well, I think actually past Turner diagonal, but, but where K thirty-two comes off the ice seventies, that fifty-eighth to its termination in Bonner Springs at the, at the county. So there was that one that kind of talked about the broader corridor being, uh, kind of a parkway visioning and then each cities kind of thing. And then our second one was, uh, the, uh, connecting Edwardsville, which, uh, was more centered around that intersection. Generally speaking, and that was pretty broad, you know, was potentially a site like this, could it be a residential site or commercial site? That it, it kind of went both directions. It didn't get into a particular type or use or, you know, what do you, you know, commercials are pretty broad thing. Now, I don't, it didn't propose an industrial use, right? I don't think that was.
Right. And I don't mean to insinuate that it's semi-trucks or, or anything like that. I understand it's not that heavy of an industrial, but when we're going from C two to C three, when we're changing the zoning, you're talking about the, um, golden standard.
Right.
It, does it fit with the vision? And, and again, I think it's, it's great. I love businesses wanting to come in and invest in our community. We just need to make sure that where we're putting them makes sense. We want to make sure we're not putting something that twenty years down the road, well, gosh, we wish, you know, that was in a, in a different location. So, um, I was just wondering if you thought if, if it fit in that plan?
This is one reason we reduce the vehicles, just so that, you know, it wouldn't be an industrial.
It's no, 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 you're fine. I mean, it, it, in, and I, I mean, I, I don't know there, there, there are other issues about closings and all that. Discount it, but that, yes, it's an important factor for them, but, but obviously you have to make decisions. But I mean, you know, that, it sounds like the challenge here is really about the vehicle class and types that we're looking at here. And I don't know where the, you know, the applicant wants to speak to that more.
I think we understand the vehicle class and types. That's not, I'm, that's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about just the vision and does a business of that size in, in those vehicles? Like we, I think we understand the types of, or the size of vehicles. He, he talked about that. Does that fit with that, um, connecting Edwardsville plan?
I would say that the comprehensive plan.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you.
In the staff report, you'll notice number twelve, um, would the proposed amendment be in conformance with the comprehensive plan? I will say that the, the comprehensive plan, which was written in two thousand and twelve, identified this area for medium density residential because, um, they didn't think it would be developed in a commercial way in the future because of the steep terrain. And that K thirty-two tri-city multi, multi-modal redevelopment plan identifies that whole corridor, corridor to be more commercial centered. And then on top of that, the connecting Edwardsville PSP, um, identifies the, the, the south side of K thirty-two to have all those bike lanes, sidewalk infrastructure and, and that sort of thing. So I, I don't think we really envisioned this area to be, um, commercial back in two thousand and twelve, just because it, it didn't seem like it would be able to develop in that sort of way. But now with our developer here who's saying that it can be, you know, it could be something else. And so I, I wanted to say that.
I, I would say this, I don't think the, that, that size of the mass of the building, right, is, is unrealistic for this site on that, on that corridor. I mean, if you think about even the Plaza West, et cetera, while they broke it into smaller, because the developer wanted to break it into there. But, you know, you have about in each one of those parks, you know, twenty-five to thirty thousand square feet of space in, in those parks, right? And most of them are, a small portion is office, you know, I mean, if you take like the landscaping company, right? I mean, a very small portion of their six thousand square foot building is office as a percentage. And then the rest of it is used for, you know, indoor storage of equipment and, and the materials of storage. You have, I think, uh, like a construction company, we have the crane company. I'm just taking, I guess, from a, from a, from a mass and using, other than you, you put it into one larger building, uh, in, in the scope of it. So I don't, I don't know that the, I'm looking at the building, uh, massing, I don't think it's outside of, of, of the corridor, uh, there. It, I mean, again, it's really about the use of it. And, and again, C two allows, I mean, today, C two allows professional office and service, however that's defined. And, and, you know, I think probably the thing that, that pushed this the most was, was that full service ability of their vehicles, whether they're a light duty van or whether it's something larger than that, that was the, I think, some of the driving influence of the zoning change.
So whether they work on their vehicles onsite or not, changes if we have to zone it C two or C three like that? That's the main concern here is if they can work on a vehicle.
That's really one of the biggest ones is that, is that auto vehicle repair and service, C two to C three is, so when we redid our zoning, we basically said you couldn't do full auto service. So again, if I go to the BP station today, if they came in with that same recommendation today, that would not be permitted for the purpose of auto repair. If you, uh, think about the building that now would, would used to be the oil change place and became, uh, you know, now it's going to be a liquor store, at least that's proposed use. I believe that's actually an I one use because they were, at that time, we didn't have a C three and I one was what was required to do this auto vehicle repair level of service. So more than just light maintenance, so it allows a heavier use of the property for auto repair. So they're going to have fleet vehicles, I mean, right, their proposal is, they may have thirty, forty, fifty fleet vehicles there that are going to be being serviced and off hours. I mean, right, I mean, they're, they're generally not going to be served, they're not going to be servicing them while they're out. I mean, I think the concept is that their employees come in and when they come in, the vehicles are ready to go. And, and they're serviced and they may have whatever materials they need in, in, in the vehicle, right? And then they're going to park their car, come get their assignment, leave, come back, uh, you know, whatever their materials were, they've used on the job, they may have to restock those, uh, the vehicle. You know, it's, you know, not, not unlike, I'll use our police department, I mean, right? I mean, our vehicles get serviced very regularly, five, six, eight days. It's all depending on miles and hours driven. And so when you're driving a vehicle all day, every day, a service vehicle, you're probably going to rack up the miles much faster than we would in our, in our daily commutes with our personal cars. So that, that's really what was driving the zoning change.
Okay, you had mentioned earlier that, and it, Google, like the Google trucks where they come in and they get in their truck and they spectrum, they go out and work on people's TVs. Is that kind of what you're, you're headed toward on this? I'm trying to get my head around the vehicles that are going to be serviced.
And we're not trying to, we just know that some, um, I'll call it like, let's call it like Spectrum or Google or whatever else. They, they might have a sedan for the salesperson.
Right.
Might have a pickup truck or a van or the technician, but they also might have a boom truck to be able to get up onto a pole, right? So that's why we are trying to ask for that broad range, but it's also why, very intentionally in a C three, non-industrial district, we've, you know, brought the vehicle ability to be too big down. I mean, no-till vehicles. We're very well aware that Macanany Construction, who lays asphalt, you know, owns the property. So we didn't want you to think that we were bringing out, you know, paving equipment. So one of the things we put in there is that you have to be able to reach highway speeds on your, on the vehicle's own, you know, powertrain, for example. That's in your motion. So we, we tried to make this very restrictive so that if anybody tried to do something that you wouldn't want, they would have to come to you and ask for that permission.
But it could be a fleet of dump trucks.
I thought we decided it couldn't be.
Well, I mean, I'm thinking if I'm looking at, uh, two axles, and you said that.
You said something, Mike, about, uh, we didn't want, um, eight tired dump trucks. Well, two axles on the rear, tandem axle, tandem wheel is eight tires on the back and two on the front is ten. So now we're, I mean, I know we're not talking about the front, and most of our vehicles around here don't have multiple tires on the front. Most of them have two. Um, but, I mean, in, in that scenario, it could be a fleet of dump trucks.
Well, then, uh, I, I think what, I, I, again, I'm going to go back. I think where you're at then is, you know, as you get into, again, for, for classification purposes, and, and it's really a weight limit. So I'll just, I'll just, again, this is federal highway. I just pulled this up and been trying to read up on this a little bit. Is so, uh, just to give you an idea, so things that you might think of like a box truck, a walk-in truck, a heavy duty pickup, a delivery vehicle. So if you think about Amazon delivery trucks, UPS, those kind of things, they fall in, generally are going to fall into what they call a class three vehicle up to fourteen thousand pounds. The next step up would allow, uh, larger versions of them. So you've got the longer, the longer truck. They call it the large walk-in truck, uh, again, a box truck or a thing. That goes to sixteen thousand. Really the last level that you get to before you probably get into starting into heavy trucks, is they say a class five, which will allow bucket trucks, large walk-in, city delivery vehicles up to nineteen thousand five hundred pounds. You go above that, you're, you, you start getting what they call beverage trucks, rack trucks, you know, heavier single axle up to twenty-six thousand. And then above that, that's when you get into refuge trucks, furniture trucks, uh, large transit buses, truck tractor trailers, dump trucks. You know, th- those large things are basically from the class seven and up. And again, we're going to do it as a restriction on the plat.
So, so what it, let's, let's cut to the chase here. What is the restrictions we, that are presently on the table? What is the restrictions that are presently on the table that will be written into the plat agreement?
So into the plat, the agreement, as it is right now, that on the plat, as a restriction, that as far as it came out of planning commission, and so let me, let me put it this way. So the original one out of planning was FHWA Class VII or below. The question is Class VII axle or Class VII weight, but we'll come back to that, have no more than three axles, must be able to operate on its own power, drive on public streets and maintain highway speeds. There shall be no tractor, trailers, or tow vehicles. So right.
Could you simply add no dump trucks or, and define dump trucks as vehicles hauling raw materials or natural material, whatever? Can we just add in dump trucks at the end of that? And satisfy everybody's concerns up here?
Well, just so I can add, so from the planning commissions, so subsequent to the planning commission and just general discussions with the applicant, I think some of the staff concerns, maybe some of the concerns that you've raised that we felt was, well, when we say Class VII, what do we mean? Because on axles, Class VII means four or more axles. By weight, it means up to 33,000 pounds, right? So.
And that was our problem between six and seven. We were fine calling it Class VII, but could only have three axles. And that allowed for, you know, that boom truck that was a little heavier, for whatever its reasons are, to be allowed. And I think we need that. So I'm still fine with Class VII, but only three axles, because then you don't move into these other kind of crazy axle vehicles.
But I think if you, I think that, so if I'm trying to enforce whatever this is, right, in the future, it's probably gross vehicle weight. I mean, I could have three axles on a, right, I could have a three-axle vehicle, that, a dump truck, a garbage truck, whatever, right? I could have that. But it's going to be heavy axle, I mean, right, it just, I mean, axles carry so much weight. And so they're bigger axle, bigger tires, bigger weight, right? So I think if the question is the vehicle weight is really what you're concerned about, because these are self-propelled vehicles, all right? They're not semi-trailers, I mean, we've already said those things. It really gets down to, is there a weight level that can be placed on the?
Just, we don't want to restrict ourselves for these kind of operators, because they're extremely successful operations that have great, like I said, daytime office staff and highly paid, the line work. They make $140,000 a year. I mean, these are great salaries to come in Edwardsville.
Data, to make this work, because quite frankly, I'm pretty excited about it. Building's a nice-looking building, it's going to bring a lot of salaries into town, or at least going to buy lunch. And so, and buy gas at our gas stations and sodas and go across the street to General Store and get products. So I'm pretty excited about the opportunity. We just need to find a way that we can all be on the same page and let, and allow you the flexibility.
I believe, and this may address your question, right? Is that construction yards, so construction company yard, right, where they're having outside storage, et cetera, of materials and things, are not permitted in C-3. I'm going to verify that. And I believe outside storage in C-3 is limited, but I need to verify that. So though, so as far as a construction yard where, I mean, beyond just hold equipment, right? Things like motor grates, things that would not be over the roads, but you could have over-the-road things that are construction-type equipment, but you know, poles, pipes, blocks, cement, et cetera. Those would not be permitted in the area. Let me get here, just to verify, so.
I'm not trying to interrupt your emotion or whatnot, but Councilman Ram is saying, and sir, I believe this was your concern as well. We're totally fine. Again, we're not bringing an excavator in here. So we're totally fine with, I think you said dump trucks that carry natural products or whatever it was, and I'll, that's, I have no problem with that. That's not our intention.
So I was just going through here, and this should have been, and I know it didn't get in your packet, and I don't have the I-1, but construction sales and service requires special use permit in C-3, as an example. Auction services requires special use. Those are the big ones, communication utility uses say special use. That's really more about train, you know, like a place where they're going to build an electric substation, those types of things, or wastewater plant, or water plant, what that means for utility uses, so. Industrial business equipment and supplies is a special use. I'm just trying to go through the outdoor sales areas, permanent seasonal, so like if you had a grass pad or something like that, that would require special use. All those things come back to you. Some of these others are special use because of pond brokers, et cetera, which are always required. So just to give you some idea.
It's time to go.
Okay. Yeah, so freight depots and distribution centers, those are I-1 users. Industrial outside storage takes a special use permit, salvage yards, obviously not permitted in this area. What is the C-3, is that in here, C-3 zoning district, say? Just want to look at one other thing, just to help. I don't think it's in this package, but it's not in this package. I'm not sure, I just wanted to verify on outside storage. We can look that up, but.
One other question, what about the sewer?
They'll be tying on to the sewer on this, so that was a discussion. So they will be on sanitary sewer, they will have to go from the north to the south, and they will connect over where the, roughly where the lift station is on that side, and they will, part of it, they will have a sewer easement, or the sewer line will run east-west across the front of their property, which is standard requirement, even though there's nothing necessarily to connect it to today.
They don't have to go under the highway?
It will have to go under the highway.
Under 32, like to the dollar.
That's their expense, yeah. And then they also are providing additional, and that's really on the plat, but easement for future sidewalk trail. So they are dedicating the easement for sewer and for sidewalk or access easement, sidewalk access. That's a plating issue.
Zach, can we go back to that? There you go.
So that, that shows you the front half of lot, so the back of the lot, and I think you do see that in your, in your overall packet. So then behind where you see the building and this parking is the additional parking that would be for their fleet vehicles.
But to the north, to the north?
Would be to the north of the building. Those, I mean.
Skinny little area.
What a drawings, a lot of, yeah, yeah, large overhead doors for a single boom truck.
The maintenance on the property that, again, Mike, you said was just going to be for the vehicles that were coming, going from that property. They're not bringing other vehicles to repair or do maintenance on at that site?
That's correct, that is their plan. I mean, that is what they've stated, but I just, and I always caution you on these things, and they, you know, zoning is zoning. Zoning is about the use of the property from the time you go forward. While this is the project that's being proposed, and because they do have a final development plan, I can tell you on the final development plan what the building and the grounds look like. But the, but the use allows for for repair and service. So I can't, I don't think anybody can sit here today and tell you that for all perpetuity that this is, you know, that this will be used specifically for the proposed use. And I give that caution on every zoning item.
So we can put plat restrictions on some things, but not on that?
Well, you can't really restrict, I probably give it to our, I mean, there's not really a way to restrict, I mean, the site plan restricts the building and what's going on the grounds and how the grounds are allocated. But zoning is simply about use. If I say, you know, use something simple, it's a residential use, you know, R3, and it says I can do houses, duplexes, and triplexes. That's its use. So if somebody comes in and wants to build houses, duplexes, or triplexes, they can. And you may not like their color palette, or, right? I mean, there's things they have to meet for streets and things, but the use is the use, so.
I have a tandem thing here, just occurred to me, is we're also working on a housing project that would, some of these employees would fit very nicely into. So we might have one project feeding the other project.
So it does under prohibited uses under C-3, just so you know, right? So obviously permitted uses are all those on the table. And there can be incidental fabrication manufacturing. So I'll give you a good example, the overhead crane company, right, that's down there. I mean, so they have, generally, they service and maintain cranes, but they have some incidental manufacturing fabrication, because they have to cut a piece of steel for the thing. So this zoning district allows for that, which, again, that we're talking about inside, limited, you know, it's not like a manufacturing, you know, not a manufacturing. It has, like most of them, certain permitted accessory uses, generally things like trash enclosures, open space, parking, interior storage, and sure being in a building. It does not allow for outdoor, specifically, it says in this district, does not allow for outdoor storage, outdoor service or equipment yards, and activities of fabrication, manufacturing, industrial natures as primary use. So, so those are not permitted under this current ordinance. So they can't just have a bunch of, you know, say they were in the business of light poles, right? Or they couldn't have a stack of poles out there, or a company that does water, contractor yard that does water, they can't store that material outside, not dimension, it's not a permitted use. It is in the.
So, and I understand the the spirit of make, was wanting to make sure that it fits in, in the comprehensive plan. And I 100% agree that with Councilman Adams on, one feeds the other. And you know what, we don't get registers, and we don't get sales tax dollars, and our budget doesn't go up if we don't have businesses coming into Edwardsville. I mean, it's a great-looking building. I do, I do have concerns about what it appears to me. I've been in this a little while, and when I see, I don't know, 12-bay service center, that's not just to pull in a truck if, when it needs an oil change. And I'm not opposed to, but that, and I don't want to be saying, well, I told you so six months later. But I am, I'm glad, but I know that we need to, that we need to move development and things into Edwardsville that's going to continue to raise all ships. And that's in housing, in our commercial and sales tax dollars. So I think the stipulations that are put in there are probably adequate.
Do you want to add dump trucks to it?
I don't, I don't know that adding dump trucks is going to change because, I mean, unless you wanted to put a dump truck chassis or that size of a truck, you know what I mean? Because that framing is the same with, if you put on a dump truck, or you put on a boom truck, or whatever, it's the same. You know what I'm saying? The size of the truck does, is the same, so.
And just so, just for clarity, so subsequent to the planning commission, where the language specifically just said Class VII, the applicant has agreed to, and if you move forward with approval, it should be.
Will you scoot that up a little more, sorry?
I said, so subsequent to the planning commission, the applicant agreed to that, to revise where it says Class VII's to simply say three axle vehicles. But if you want to leave in Class VII for weight purposes, I believe the applicant is acceptable to that, which would allow vehicles up to 33,000 pounds. So it doesn't matter, again, I think your point, Mr. Stites, is a frame is a frame is a frame, so you could get a multitude of vehicles potentially there. Again, they're all road, these are all licensed vehicles over the road, right? So this is not machinery and equipment, you know, like, you know, motor graders, or, you know, they have to be a licensed vehicle per the comments. And again, we're And again, we're really going to get to that at the time of the plat, because it's a restriction on the plat, but they all go, it goes together.
Mike, Mike, as I understand your comments repeatedly, it seems to me like the council is drifting off of this first issue is the, is the recommendation for the planning, the zone change. All this other stuff comes at another point, and, and I wish the council would remember that, what you said. The, those other issues are important, but not when it comes to zoning.
Yeah, I, I mean, they are somewhat intertwined, but, but fundamentally, we're talking about, we're talking about the use, right?
But at this, at this stage, we're asking for a zoning change, not to regulate truck size, truck axles or anything else.
I guess just to stay on the zoning change then, why couldn't they do this under a C two? Because it looks like you can do some of the, their vehicle auto repair and service. Is there just a lot more repair that you're needing to do?
The conversation that Mike and I had nine months ago when we were doing this was C two or C three, and what we basically went back to was professional office service, but didn't necessarily mean servicing a vehicle versus I'm a plumber and I'm going to go service somebody and I'm allowed to office there. So the ability to work on the vehicle, Mike thought that we had to be in a top category of auto vehicle, auto vehicle repair. So.
To clarify.
Look at the design of the building, I mean, there's just no way, I just can't imagine, I mean, it's possible, anything's possible, something. But, you know, this is not a publicly accessible building, you know, there's, there's a, the office space, but then there's just, you know, privacy fence. It's just not something you're going to like pull up to the gate and honk and hope somebody let you in.
And it looks like, and from what you've said, that you won't even really see most of it from K thirty-two, is that right? Because there's the pond at the front, it looks like, and then just a driveway back.
For, for, just so I'll be clear here, so the, the discussions we had was, so in C two, auto vehicle repair service limited, I think there's some question, I mean, some of our definition, I, I'm not sure I know exactly what that means, but I would generally say that means limited to, I mean, you know, sometimes new car lot, you know, have, they don't have full service, but they just do oil change, belt, you know, that, they're not doing engine stuff, they're not doing mechanical repairs, right, they're not putting a new front end under a, a vehicle. They're just doing tires, oil, filling fluids, things.
That's under C two.
That is under C two, so, so auto service repair limited is a permitted use in C two. Auto vehicle repair service is permitted with a special use permit and the applicant, and, and because special use permits can be, right? I mean, depending how they're done, right, limits your, your use, because it's a special use permit. And whereas C three allows by right auto vehicle repair and service. That, that was really the broad discussion of special use, which, so I have to come through and do a special use, those could be limited to time, right? They, they, obviously special use, you have more control with a special use permit versus a permitted use. And that was the discussion of why three versus two, that, that's the fundamental. So I, I, I will go back, just, I mean, the mayor's great, so, so we're talking about the use of the property for, for all, for, you know, really all future purposes, because once you zone something up, you seldom don't zone it back down. Now, we do have reversionary zoning and it's included in this ordinance, but it's based on the filing, you know, approval of a final development plan and ultimately construction, so in this case, we already have that. But you have really three options, and that is approve the, the planning commission's recommendation, which is to approve it from C two to C three. You, you can either, you know, you, you can remand it back to them and say, we want you to address these concerns and give us a new recommendation. Or you can take some other action other than the planning commission, which can be denial, that's a different action, or some other action than what they have approved. Each of those takes four votes, so if, if there's something while still within the zoning ordinance, but you feel you want to do something different, then that, you have that option under the two third. In, in every case, it's going to require four positive votes to whatever the motion is.
So what triggered the C two to C three is the wording of servicing the vehicle, am I correct? I mean, is that what it all boils down to?
That was auto.
That simple?
Auto vehicle repair and service.
So isn't that what they're wanting to do, service through vehicles?
Correct.
So then why are we changing?
Well, they can do limited service without, if they want to be able to do full service.
Full service, which means what? I mean, you, you, you were saying changing out engines.
Mechanical repairs. Beyond, I, I, we don't have a real clear definitions in these, but limited would be, we've interpreted limited to be oil change, fluid changes, right, maybe a tire replacement, those are.
So reading between the lines there, I'm guessing what I'm hearing then is that you, it, it's been relayed to you that if a vehicle comes in there and needs an engine swap, then this, then this would be permitted to happen, and that's a service that they would provide on their vehicles while they're there, correct?
It would, it would allow them to do whatever.
And we're saying that we're okay with that, that's, I mean, that's.
That, that's what C three says, is that any vehicle, it would allow any type of vehicle repair and service. I would say that would include everything from, from an engine replacement to painting to bodywork, any of those things would be incorporated into that.
It's a full service shop.
That's, that is the way staff has interpreted those languages of those two different areas.
But it is their fleet vehicles.
Right, yes.
Mike, can you reread the recommendation from the planning commission with all, with any stipulations that are associated with it, please?
So. The, the, again, zoning, I'm only talking about zoning, the only stipulation under zoning is that the rezoning would be contingent upon meeting at a reversionary requirement within twelve months of approval of the rezoning. And if you look at the ordinance, that has to do with the filing and approval of the final, the final plan. Let me get the ordinance back here. So in the ordinance, you see that we have. Trying to find it again here. Oh, if you look under section six, it says the zoning map shall not be amended until a final plat is approved by the city and filed with the unified government. Right, and the plat is where we're talking about these conditions. Such filing must occur within one year of the date of approval of the zoning change, which is typical. And if the final plat is not filed within a year, then it would revert back to a C two. And then also it talks about the development plan must be, uh, final development plan must be approved within one year of the approval of the zoning change by the government. Well, you're hearing both of those items tonight, so lack of, short of them failing to file the plat, the zoning would stay, just the zone.
And Mike, what, what was the reason for the dividing of the property?
Between the north and the south?
Yeah, what, what did, what did it do? Why, and, and I mean, there has to be some sort of logic behind it, assuming.
And I, I mean, other than just that area wasn't really developable and they proposed it as a lot and a, and a, as a, a lot and a track. The applicants, there may be, there may be reasons for money borrowing or something, I don't know.
That's just extremely common in development, when you have an undevelopable track, like a wa, a waterway or something like that, to put it in a track. And then the lot itself, you know, is what we develop, that's just, sorry, is our standard practice, we do it all over the place. So no particular reason, anything that would ever be done with the track would have to come back to you, which is nothing, but to so you know you have full control on authority.
And, and is the change, excuse me, from a C two to a C three, is that ordinance ten forty-five?
Correct. That's the only thing you adopt by ordinance is the zoning, because that's basically a legal action. And the map then gets changed in our official documents.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion, we adopt ordinance ten forty-five, an ordinance amending the official zoning map referred to and made part of the zoning regulations by ordinance number nine sixty-three, incorporated by reference by chapter fourteen of the code of the city of Edwardsville, Kansas, by providing for a change in zoning of the properties located at ten six hundred Call Drive within the city from a C two commercial retail to a C three commercial general.
I'll second.
I think the restrictions come later, right?
They will come on the plat.
Right.
Yes.
Okay, I will not repeat that motion, but the motion has been made and seconded to approve or adopt ordinance number ten forty-five. And I will stop there and, and everything else that he said applies. So if there are no further questions, would the clerk please call over?
Shriver?
Yes.
Stites?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Kayhar?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
Okay, now we jumped, jump to the next one.
Does it, mayor vote?
Oh, sorry, yes, this, and Mayor McCaffrey.
Do I have to? Okay, yes. Thank you. We'll go to the next one, which is the final plat for one oh six hundred Call Drive and acceptance of dedicated public right of way easements. It's at the next one.
Yeah, so, so this is really the, the plat here, and again, this is a little unusual, I've finally told you. But as we looked at this, I think the parties agreed that the plat gave the most restricting power. So when something's on a plat, we have authority, when it's like an HOA or something like that, right, those are separate bodies and we don't regulate HOA regulations and, and really the applicant said, well, I think at best we put it on the plat and not under an HOA, because that was a discussion. And I would concur that it certainly gives us more authority than now you're in violation of a plat. So this is the question where, you know, the, the question is those stipulations that in your agenda item, you know, the agenda memo, final plat, there are four conditions. And I think the only condition, and for clarification, is that when we use these FWH, FHWA classifications, I think there needs to be clarity or to simply remove it and say any, any vehicle that is, has three axes. And you're going to say three actions less and you don't care what the weight is, or you want to use three axles in some weight classification system. I wouldn't, I wouldn't suggest that you use a weight that's in between. For example, I, I heard you say twenty thousand, well, classic starts at nineteen five oh one and goes up, I'd either, I'd either say nineteen five or I'd go to twenty-six or I'd go to thirty-three, i- if that's an issue. If it's not an issue, say, or, or you may not care how many axes it has, I don't know. But the recommendation and the discussion, the same discussion you're having is the primary discussion of the planning commission, which was simply, we're okay with this concept, but because it's still kind of an open concept, we, you know, we don't want to see semi, we don't want it to become a truck tractor, trailer, maintenance yard on K thirty-two, which these restrictions would prohibit it, and I believe the zoning would not allow it, I will say that.
So the zoning that was just applied already controls, we can't make it a storage yard, we can't do outside, you know, massive outside storage, we can't store raw materials. It's all the things that are in place, you know, you don't want the vehicles to match, you already can't do it in, in the yard. So every restriction, just, just so you understand in my world, which I know is not your problem, but every restriction we put in devalues the property. And so the reason why we came up with the class seven, but only three axles, was because it did give you a standard. I would really suggest we just kind of stick with the language that gives you what you're, where you want to go on that. But I just don't want to like wind up with a tenant that has twenty-eight thousand pound vehicles and all of a sudden we have a huge problem. So the rec, the planning, we worked out with staff and planning, I, I think is a good compromise. Let's face it, by definition, you can't get a whole lot heavier than thirty-two anyway, with only three vehicles, I don't even think you can get to thirty-two with more than three axles, quite frankly, but let's leave that up to the vehicle people.
I think what I'd say to that is, I, I mean, only you know what users that you've identified. So clearly believe that you have one of, a user or multiple users that have vehicles that are in excess of the language that is being talked about right now, right, would you agree?
No, sir, what is in the recommendation of the planning department on staff, the planning commission passed the full hearing, is exactly what we are in favor of.
Right, so I'm saying that you have clearly, I, I assume that you have identified a user that you have, that, because you've said you had three that you're negotiating with right now, and that it, the weight restriction that's being talked about right now would put them in excess if we put that weight limit on it.
The numbers that I was hearing a few moments ago was like nineteen thousand pounds, and I don't know between nineteen thousand pounds and thirty-two thousand pounds, where the vehicles and the groups we're talking to fall. All I know is that everybody that we're talking to is, is like, yeah, we don't care, three ounces is fine. You know, it just, it's kind of a moot point, we weren't really like talking real big heavy numbers. I just know that, you know, there was a group that had heavier vehicles that was over class six. That's what Mike and I were talking about a month, a month ago before we started this hearing process. So it was between six and seven, so that's why we said the weight of seven, but only three axles, and that's why we came up with that.
I, I like that seven with a weight limit, or be, with a axle limit, because it does have a standard. There's something of a highly published accepted standard.
And that's what I would say, I, if I, I would slightly amend the condition just to add the language where it says limited FHWA, and I would say gross, gross vehicle weight rating classification class seven, because class seven in that area is about weight. If you say class seven and don't say anything, class seven is four or more axes.
Okay.
Totally, they're just two different classes, we're talking about gross vehicle weight.
So where in our paperwork is that document where?
This document?
Yeah, the final plat document.
Uh, the final plat document should be, we had it up on the screen before. It is the one on the right, so all the final plat does, and those restrictions are not on the face of this plat. Right, so the planning commission makes the recommendations, comes to you, then the plat will be administratively updated. But you do have the final plat. Trying to, you go plat the, the, all the staff report the, the second page, it says final plat of stag passage on the top.
Anybody else found it?
Thirteenth page.
The what page?
On the, should be in the thirteenth page of your package.
Is that it?
Yes, sir. Oh, it said fine, I thought that was. This one right there is fine.
Zach, I'm not, Zach, I'm not sure if I missed it, but were you passed out the magnifying glasses?
Yeah. Yes, we do.
Mike had a quick question. And I noticed in the final plan analysis that we waived the required public sidewalk, because there's probably not sidewalk coming right up to it. I wondered if, if we have discussed maybe a contribution to parks or anything like that in lieu of that sidewalk?
We did not have that discussion. We did make them, I'd say, because under plating, right, we have authority to require easements and dedication. So we did make them dedicate that additional space for the sewer and for the sidewalk as part of the plat. We don't, we don't have an ordinance in place that, that isn't in lieu of V. You could require on the final plan that they build the sidewalk. Not sure.
I don't know if we need one, right? That, I mean, I understand.
It's something we probably.
I just think if we do it later, then it's, it sounds like it'd be on our expense, so.
But we're getting, making sure we have the right of use and access so we can build the sidewalk from there sometimes. Maybe part of the road project, maybe part of a K dot project could be funded locally. I mean, but, but you're not, we do have a requirement about sidewalks and in most of the districts it does require it. But typically have not required them to date, because we don't really have a consistent sidewalk plan. And I know you got to start somewhere. And I mean, there's always that. Wasn't sure this, the north side, because really, we'd see the sidewalks being more focused on the south side because of terrain. But we didn't want to give up our ability to have a sidewalk in sight some future and have to go back and actually acquire the property for that, right? Some future property owner may say, I don't want a sidewalk there. I'm not giving you the property, but you can buy it from me. Right? We don't want to be in that spot. So really, what you're doing in the final plat fundamentally here is you're accepting the easements that are noted on the plat. So these are public, right, these are public easements and rights of way that are being dedicated to the city. And fundamentally, that's what you're doing. The planning commission approves the preliminary plat and the final plat as it relates to the boundaries and those things. And you, of course, are accepting or imposing those restrictions placed on the base. Those are really due. So you're accepting these, and I know they're hard to see, but again, they have a lot. One, that's ten acres, the track A, which is seven, three. And then the dedications for the utility easements, there's already sufficient right of way, and the sanitary sewer, and the sidewalk, plus the restrictions that we talked about the seat.
So where is the restriction stated in this final plat?
It is not on this final plat. It's a requirement prior. So they will have to fight. So these restrictions have to be on the plat, with plat signed by, so all plats have to be signed by the planning commission chair and secretary, the mayor, and the city clerk before it can be filed. And we're the last people that ever sign plats. And if we don't sign them, it doesn't get filed.
Okay, so, so I guess, how do we, how do we make sure that our restrictions are implemented? If it's not written on here?
Well, it's, it's, it's the planning commissions, so it's part of their restrictions and conditions of the plat. And you're going to accept those conditions or modify them if that's what we're just doing with that language. The plat can't be filed without those restrictions on the face of the plat. If the plat's not filed, they don't, their zoning doesn't happen.
I understand.
It's in your motion. Then we have to put it on the plat before it's published.
Okay.
Before it's submitted.
All right. All right. That's, that's, that's just what I want.
What you see is actually not the plat.
Okay.
It's, we have to add the language that is very strict.
Okay. All right. It's nice to know. Thank you.
Sometimes, again, this one's been a little bit, I mean, many times, that everything's so, the restrictions and the easements, it's a, it's truly a square lot with nothing, right? It's very limited. And, and they're all clean and ready to go here. This one, because we've had, as you've seen, moving parts, we didn't want to keep revising the plat fifteen times until we had the right.
So please give me the exact wording that the, that the planning commission put in their stipulation or their condition or whatever we call it.
So the, back here.
What page, what pages is it on?
If you, if you look at the second page of your staff report, under final plat.
Okay.
Those are the conditions for the final plat with the one modification that I would read following FHWA to read gross vehicle weight rating based classification. And then class seven, yeah. The words we're adding between.
Where is it written?
There's this.
I can't find anything that's.
Oh, yeah. Well, that was, that was actually subsequent. So
Okay, there it is.
If I might add, at the bottom of that paragraph, number four, we talked about subsequently, the developer has agreed to eliminate the class. We'll strike through that. That was not a recommendation of the planning commission, but staff's, what staff was proposing for modification. So it was, so if you, it goes through and will end, as far as the recommendations, I'll just read it, if I may.
Okay.
Tell me when you're ready and I'll read it.
I've, I've got it in front of me. I couldn't find it. So.
Okay.
So we're striking subsequently, the developers agreed to eliminate.
Correct. And we're adding the other language that I read a moment ago.
And not putting in a weight restriction, other than what matches class seven.
Class seven. That is correct.
Thirty-three thousand pounds.
But that, that, that's, that's, that's the, there hasn't been a recommendation yet. So that's, that's the, that's the discussion. Three axles up thirty-three thousand pounds.
Is it, okay, so what, we, I've got to get some clarification here. This is, this is really way muddy. What, because it looks like what's written in number four is what you said you didn't want to do, which is have a class seven and then revise it to three axles. Instead, I thought we were going to do three axles and a weight limit associated with class seven.
That is what, when we say FHWA gross vehicle weight based classification, class seven or below
Okay.
is weight. Have no more than three axes. So those, both items.
It just doesn't say gross vehicle weight.
It's a, it's a three axle vehicle that can weigh up to thirty-three thousand pounds.
Correct. That is, that is what's in the condition.
And unless we change it, it could be, unless there's a change to it, we could say it's three axles at two thousand pounds, or three axles at twenty thousand, or three axles at twenty-eight thousand. But if we don't make any changes, it's three axles at thirty-three thousand pounds.
Or you can take the weight completely out and just be three axes. I would say that, but then opens it to any, any and all ways. I don't know how big, I don't know how big you can do two axes.
I think if you look at a class seven vehicle, the only way you get to thirty-three thousand pounds by having more than three axles. That's why I think the three axles really kind of did it for us. When Mike suggested, why do we have this class seven in there? I was like, yeah, it's fine with me. I just don't think you can get to thirty-three thousand with only three actions, break your axles. So, but you could get to twenty-eight, or twenty-nine, or thirty, or thirty-one, or thirty-two, maybe. I mean, we're using the extreme, but saying, you know. I mean, if you look at a class seven.
What's class six, Mike? What is class six?
The weight, the weight class six is nineteen five oh one to twenty-six thousand pounds. And there, and these are not the vehicles that they show in that classification, right, for demonstration purposes only. The beverage truck, a single axle vehicle, a school bus, but buses are already, or a rack truck, a weight, a rack truck. So a truck that had like, guy.
Glass truck or something.
Below that, the class five shows bucket trucks, large walk-ins, and sitting delivery trucks. If you would like, may, the class seven, and again, these are demonstration of the weight. They show refuse trucks, furniture trucks, city transit buses, and truck trailer, the truck tracks, or the cat. But they can't have under our
Can't have a trailer. I'll take a stab at this. Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we adopt the final plat for stag's passage on the above-mentioned lot with conditions that recommended by the planning commission, one, two, three, and four. So are we not recommending a weight, are saying gross weight, or just?
Yeah. Where it reads under force, and all fleet vehicles shall be limited to FHWA gross vehicle weight rating based classification class seven.
Okay, gross, gross.
Vehicle weight rating based classification class seven.
Okay. Item number four, with the insert that Mike just mentioned, and striking subsequently, the developer has agreed to eliminate vehicle classification of class seven or below.
You also just, for your, you are also accepting the proposed dedications of easements and right of way.
Correct.
I will second that. Okay, I will, I will do that. Yeah, thank you. I'm not going to repeat all that, obviously. The only way a motion has been made, seconded, to approve the final plat with all the conditions given. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Chuck, now you want to, please?
So I, I, I looked up, and I just want to make this as a point, that a typical forty-foot boom truck weighs twelve thousand three hundred pounds operating weight.
Sweet.
So that class six would have covered. At nineteen five, clearly, that would have been in that category. That's all.
Would you prefer to amend the motion?
I think it's easier to amend it now.
Okay. Well, you can amend the, the, the motion if you want to add something. But what we do is, when you amend it, then we take care of handling the amendment, and then we then move on the original motion with the amendment. I'm, I'm confused. That's okay.
So I think that we need to have some sort of a weight restriction. And if, if, I mean, that gives it, if a typical forty-foot boom truck is twelve thousand three hundred pounds, and we're talking about, oh, it's nineteen five, that's three and a half tons more of a vehicle that can pull in there.
So just.
And that's, I mean, I'm just going off of what has been presented to us, would be a typical vehicle that would go in there is a service truck, a vehicle, a service vehicle that, and I just Googled it. So I did was, and a forty-foot boom truck, if that's what it is, and a bucket trucks even less.
So, so the classified, just for clarification, is vehicles up to gross vehicle weight, right? So gross vehicle weight.
Six.
Gross vehicle weight rating, class five is up to nineteen thousand five. I know you said six. So six goes, six goes to twenty-six thousand.
Do you wish to make an amendment?
That would probably be the, so that four thousand pound truck could be rated, GBW could be rated higher probably.
Right. That was because.
Because of the chassis size?
I'm not a chassis expert here. I'm just, I just Googled, you know, typical weight of a boom truck, and it came up with a forty-foot boom truck, which is, seems like, and then, I mean, here's a sixty-foot boom truck, and a sixty-foot boom truck weighs sixteen five.
The actual number on the floor could say twenty-five.
I don't know. I didn't ask to see the board.
I think, I think.
I can. No, in, in my business, I have dump trucks come in, and different, different people have different ratings on them. The heaviest is eighty-five five, but I've had them come in and want seventy on them. So.
So there, I think there's a difference.
And they're still six axle or seven axle dump trucks.
I think the difference, so there's, there's empty weights, I think. And then gross vehicle weight rating.
Yeah.
Is low, low, yeah. That is max lower, is like gross vehicle weight, which would be nineteen five, correct?
Kevin can.
Nineteen five is a class five.
I think Kevin wants to comment here.
With all respect to Google, I mean, I have an RV Sprinter, or, you know, like van, like a little class B. It's fourteen thousand pounds. So these things are just highly inaccurate to like, make motions on the fly, in my opinion. And we researched the heck out of this, spent weeks and weeks and weeks coming up with this discussion point. And that's where we came with the three axle issue. I would have to withdraw, quite frankly, at nineteen thousand pounds. There's just, I know that a couple of folks we're talking to have like, you know, twenty-two or twenty-three thousand pound vehicles. Some of the stuff they do is just heavy. As you mentioned, there's a certain kind of chassis, and what you put on the back makes the vehicle weigh so much, you know? So it's just, you know, if it, whatever you put on the back is heavier, then it can weigh more.
Could you give us an idea of what?
Yes, if you tell me what we were afraid of, then maybe I can figure out how to address it. But I think the three axles really gets us to the restrictions that you're all are asking us to put on this. That's what we've created.
Could you give us an idea of what type of truck is the twenty-three thousand?
Yeah, it was just, it's, it's a, it was a maintenance vehicle for one of the railroad companies. You know, something they do with railroad. And I mean, that's like two cranes and stabilizers, and it's a steel, you know, just basically, it's a thing of steel you put on the back of the vehicle, but it's got three axles. It's fine. You know, and that's like two of the vehicles of the forty they have, you know? And so I just, I'm just trying to figure out, I don't know, I don't know what we're, why we're trying to get to a certain arbitrary number.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to call the question.
Okay. Question has been called. Motion seconded has been made. The question has been called. Would the clerk please call roll?
Driver?
Yes.
Dyke?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Kayhar?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
McTaggart?
Yes.
Got to do that one. Are we, are we, the next one in line is a preliminary final development plan?
Preliminary and final development plan.
I'm, I'm going to turn this back to Bradley, the planners, that we have that.
Bradley, the planner.
Now that we got rid of all the messy stuff, let's just go free. Because this is zone, non-residential, it had to go through the plan review process, which has a higher level of standards as far as design and some requirements that need to be met. Sorry, my brain's a little foggy. So the effort has provided all the necessary plans that are So the app then has provided all the necessary plans that are required through this process, including landscape plan, the plans that you see here, as far as elevations go. They're requesting three deviations from those requirements, all centered around, really, the type of material used, and the building coverage requirements. Per that planning review process, we require fifty percent of the time covered in masonry, brick, some sort of higher-level material, metal is prohibited from that. But in this case, they're using not your just standard metal siding that you might, might be thinking of, it's actually a very high-grade metal with proper insulation, the heating requirements of that are, are high, I'm sorry.
Our value.
Yeah. Let's see. There's also a waiver required, public sidewalk is recommended due to development patterns and sidewalk easements that we spoke about. Um, let's see. If you guys have any questions regarding the plans, happy to.
So, so I didn't, I didn't look at it just yet, I, I thought you might mention, I don't, I'm not sure. So fifty percent is generally what we're asking on masonry?
Correct.
And the deviation to that is, is ask, they're asking what? A hundred percent?
No.
Ten percent.
Ten percent of the building?
Ten percent masonry on the building.
Okay. And that? Ten percent that faces the road?
No, actually, around the fleet area. So one of our concerns was that, the original proposal in the preliminary was what I would call the traditional metal siding in the building. So, I mean, we being collectively, that that would not be acceptable. In lieu of that, they added the split-face block along the bottom that you see on the plans, I think it's around four feet, is that correct? Four feet high, split-face block.
On which side?
And then they upgraded it to the architectural panel.
On which side, which, which side is that, that?
Split-face block?
Yeah.
It's on the east, west, and I believe the rear of the building.
So what faces K thirty-two? What's, what is, is there a deviation from? I don't know, you can't, can you zoom in on that, Zachs?
You had, you had a bigger picture earlier.
Top left.
Yeah, yes. So it, is there masonry that is supposed to go on the front, which is fifty percent is generally what we ask for, correct? My opinion is we can, we stick with that.
It's totally fine with us, it costs a third of the price. The, the architectural metals we're putting on the building are extremely expensive. So we thought it was a bit more attractive with sort of the planning commission. But if you want us to go.
And, and that's only on the front, the base is thirty-two, is that correct?
We're trying to have a very professional appearance of a modern building, the stone, the timber.
You'll see a better picture of that, that board I passed around?
Yeah, that's where I saw it.
There's also a color render.
Yeah, that's where I saw it. There we go.
We really thought we were doing a good night.
Are they?
The front sample.
So this, this, I mean, this is the front?
Yep.
So just, just flat white, front?
Blue, and the blue sticks out a little bit, so it's, that reveals the building.
Is there landscaping with that?
You have an entire landscaping plan.
Yeah, there's a lot of requirements on that.
That's what I thought.
I think you'll find it to be a highly attractive build.
So what were you saying, you could have done brick, I heard you mentioned?
We'll do the masonry on the front, it's literally, this is three times the cost to, to build this, right?
I mean, you know, with, with, what it's called is gingerbread, when gingerbread a building or whatever, you know, to make it appealing for this, from the street, the eye to see. And I mean, if we're saying that it looks okay, I mean, or, I mean, I, I don't particularly think it looks, I think it could look a little different, you know? It's just me, I mean, I think it's white with the white metal building with the blue awning. And I think it could, but maybe with the right, I mean, we don't see the landscape plans, so, but that was just my question.
Well, I, I, I would, and y'all may have seen this building, there may be others, I just, I know the one that, both the architect and, and the applicant, so built a building on Shawnee Mission Parkway, and that name, I don't, that name and one that she built on the north side of Shawnee Parkway.
Yeah. I mean, and I think what you'll find is that the, the design of the building, again, it's very modern, it's frankly, it looks better over the long run, and this is no Morton building, you know, there's no Butler building. This is, I think you have samples right there, it's a very clean look, it really just, I think it's gonna be really attractive, that's a drive-by on my.
I guess for, for reference, I mean, it was, it was a request, and was ultimately agreed, the planning commission agreed to that, to that particular deviation. So just for reference, we, some places will go through a whole board of zoning adjustments, and, and we've used the site plan, so when somebody comes in for their, for their preliminary final development plan, typically, they, they bring in their, their preliminary development plan, by staff and engineers and, and, you know, et cetera. It goes to the DRC, which is our design review committee, to, to look at all these kind of items, really the look and feel of those items. And it's the applicant's responsibility to say, I want a deviation from your requirements, right? From our site plane requirements, or development plane requirements. Those have to be, come before the planning commission, and the planning commission has to meet them, they can accept or reject any or all of those in their, in their process of approving the final development plan, making their recommendations.
I, I, I think there's some concern about item number three, the, the easement part. I don't think there's any concern about requiring a sidewalk right now, that would be kind of silly. But, but excluding.
That may be incorrect, because there is a, they may have requested, but the plat already has the easement.
For a sidewalk.
We have easement for the sidewalk, and, and just for what it's worth, I'm just gonna throw this out there, because I meant, I know you mentioned the donation, this will be one of the very few properties of this type, you know, in the Kansas City metropolitan area, because we develop on both sides of the line. We are not requesting a tax payment at all, in any way. And so just something to think about when it comes to the sidewalk and whatnot, we already have to give the land. Yeah, I think the money will flow into that virtual, you know, if you do a sidewalk down the road, more than covered.
Do we have to do primary and final separate?
Yes, they are separate, because, because somebody could have a preliminary, and then come back to the final, but say they wanted to come, they didn't want to build to their, to their final, depending on how much change to that, they could come back with just a final plan.
Okay, so.
If the, if the general, I'll just say that there was a.
But just tell me with this one, this one, what would a primary development plan motion sound like? And what would a final development plan?
Approval of preliminary development plan as, as recommended by the planning.
With, okay, so I make, I make that motion of the approval of the preliminary plan with the three deviations mentioned by the, or recommended by the planning commission, but strike and the sidewalk easement, the, the dedications from number three.
So you don't want the dedication?
It's already, we already have it in the plat.
Second?
So this is, this motion is only for the preliminary.
Preliminary.
Oh, then, then moved in second to approve the preliminary development plan for one oh-six-hundred and twelve, right, is that correct? Okay, the motion is second, any further comments? Okay, would the clerk please call roll?
Shriver?
Yes.
Stites? Adams?
Yes.
Kayhar?
Yes.
Malot?
Yes.
And Mayor McTagg?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion, we approve the final development plan, and that would include those deviations as well?
Correct.
With the, the three deviations recommended by the planning commission, with the and sidewalk easement dedication struck from item number three.
Second?
Then mo, motion in the second to approve the final dilemma, development plan with the, hold on.
I'm sorry, if you look at your agenda item, there are actually eight conditions in there. But, so those were the deviations, the deviations are still in play, but there's also the conditions that's in the staff report.
What page are we looking at now?
Page, page number three, so in the, in. It's in your agenda.
Page number three? Gosh. I withdraw my motion.
Withdraw second? Motion has been withdrawn. We don't need to vote on that, hey, we live, so, okay, I didn't think so.
Go back. There you go. Well, that's it, you need to go through the agenda memo. There you go, right there. Final development plan has those following conditions.
What page are we on now?
Third page of your agenda.
Numbered, so.
Item number four, who's getting clients? Oh, really, I was like, this last page, so it's not in that packet, it's in the agenda part.
Okay.
Yes. There's the conditions.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we approve the final development plan submitted, should I put the August twenty-sixth date in there?
Yes.
Submitted August twenty-six, two thousand and one, with the, with the following deviations and conditions that were recommended by the planning commission, which are number one through eight. Do we need to read those?
No, sir.
Second?
Okay, we have motion and a second to approve the final development plan presented on August the twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-one, with the attached deviations.
Hey.
Is that adequate?
Yes.
Okay.
Or clarification, we need clarification.
Yeah, I just want to be clear on number seven, condition seven.
Yes, sir.
What, what is, explain?
That the applicant, so six and seven together, so the applicant is required to provide a twenty-four-hour traffic count with speed and vehicle data, and that the applicant will provide a statement of support of reduction of the speed from fifty-five to forty-five based on that speed, basically make a, they'll give a letter of support to reduce the speed.
Okay, let's muddy the water a little bit.
Yes, sir.
What if we take the forty-five limit down to thirty-five, and the, and the sixty-mile limit down to forty-five? What if we request that? Is it fifty-five? Okay, what if we, what if we did that for safety purposes with all the traffic as, as a, because it'd be kind of nice to have a slower speed through that area, that's for darn sure.
And, and KDOT's gotta ultimately sign up on it.
Right, but, but just support that recommendation of reducing the speed limit on K thirty-two that is marked fifty-five down to forty-five, that is marked forty-five down to thirty-five.
And honestly, I don't believe that we need the developers' support on, on, you know, I mean, I mean, we're, we're gonna decide that.
Uh, uh, correct.
Yeah.
So.
Wouldn't his letter of support for that, wouldn't that suffice?
KDOT?
Developers' letter of support. I think that would suffice.
Who?
The KDOT, or?
I don't know what they're gonna require, but I mean, I like the idea of slowing it down, like we already said, I mean, you're the one that's been asking for it for years.
I've been wanting it all the way.
Are, are you?
I think that we're asking a little bit too much of the developer, too, I think if he would present a letter of support for that.
No, I wasn't asking for more, I was saying we didn't even need it, no, I wasn't asking for more.
So it would, it'd be a revision of the, of the motion on item number seven? Do I need, and, and I need an amendment to the motion now, wouldn't I?
He, he wants to make a, a change to the motion, and so do we need to have an amendment to the motion?
Of item number seven.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so on item number seven, I would like that to.
I was just gonna say, though, I mean, really what we're asking for here is, when we go to KDOT and make a request like this, right? I mean, I'm gonna say, generally speaking, KDOT doesn't like to adjust its speed limits, right? Because we've made certain requests in the past, we're basing this request in really a change, change in development pattern, so, right? There hasn't been a develop, the development pattern has been driveway basically on one side of the road, now we have a driveway on the second side of the road, that, that's the reason we're asking for support from the developer. We may ask from other people as well, whatever that speed limit.
Okay, so.
If, if we locally think that the speed limit should be less, I want to request that, I, I mean, I think the developer, I can speak for him, so he just was willing to provide us
Right.
support for a reduction of speed.
I get it.
Having said in your seat before, we will support a reduction, a statement recommending a reduction of speed. Y'all set the speed.
Okay.
That's what I, exactly.
Okay, all right, so amending, amending item number seven to read, the, the, the condition would be a statement recommending the reduction of speed, period. Need a second?
Yeah. I'll second that. So we're going to act on the amendment, so the amendment is to amend the item number seven, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, and he's already said what it is, so with that, would the clerk please call roll?
Shriver?
Yes.
Stites?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Kayhar?
Yes.
Malot?
Yes.
Mayor?
Okay, mayor.
Oh, mayor. Yeah, okay. So now we need to, to handle the original motion as amended. Would the clerk please call roll?
Shriver?
Yes.
Stites?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Kayhar?
Yes.
Malot?
Yes.
McTagg?
Yes.
How many more of these things we need to? Are we done with this? Kevin, thank you. Okay.
Mike? Very quick, in, in addition, just to the written report, I just wanted to say, as y'all know, today is Columbus Day and Indigenous People Day, but also, the governor has, has made today Home Rule City Day, and home rule powers are very important to us, and so the governor made the declaration that today is Home Rule City Day. So you get to celebrate three days.
But every day was Home Rule Day.
Well, it should be.
Well, actually, it is, but we don't.
That's all I have, man.
Okay, thank you. Zach, have you got anything to add? Okay, thank you. Chuck, I will start with you.
I have nothing additionally.
Okay, Carolyn?
Nothing, snake.
I think I'll leave it alone, too.
Mark, everybody's dropping, okay, good.
I have a whole list now, kidding. One question about that project that we just voted. What, what's the timeline, projected start-to-finish opening, is there, they have any idea?
I think, it's just, I'm not too bad, I mean, I think they're in the process of marketing it, they wanted to get all their rights in place, they can then go out, sign a lease, and once they have the lease. they can then go out, sign a lease, and once they have the lease, um.
So they have three projected or possible?
I would say that they probably would be, uh, start of construction in spring.
When will we know who? Will we know who the?
Whenever they make it public.
Okay.
And I, I've not had any discussions on any applicant, since there's no, no incentives being requested here.
It's incredibly hard deciding stuff like when we don't know.
Yeah.
So, it's a challenge, but it's exciting, a business coming to Edwardsville. Sounds like a large business, too, so, and jobs.
Yes.
Possible housing for, so it is, it, it was, it's, it's a big deal.
Yeah, let me say this, because this was, was a confusing night, and we will, we, and I can, I can see it on everybody's face, and I'd see it on my own. We're gonna come back and find a better process, I mean, I mean, there's certain things we have to do legally, but we have to find a better way to present the information so you make it more visible, and so just know that that will be a discussion probably tomorrow.
Thank you. I was.
Or, I'm sorry, you're done, no.
One more question, I forgot the date already, once a large item pick-up, is that November, Zach? I know it was in the Hot Shot, is that?
It's November sixth, and we're also sending out hard copy, um, kind of a hard copy version of the Hot Shot to our addresses on our utility customers.
Thank you, that's what I was gonna ask, if there was gonna be a little more advertising, thank you.
Saturday, November sixth.
Gotcha. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, I'm sorry, I didn't.
It's okay.
Jack, it's your turn.
I've got six items with, uh, five bullet points under each, and now what I'll say that is, um, I, I, I'm glad that we have development moving forward in Edwardsville. I just think that, and, and I appreciate everybody here that is concerned about making sure it fits in long, long-term down the road, is this really what we want, and, and I, I think the questions and comments and, uh, were great, that, uh, because it shows that we're just not ready to just vote anything that comes in front of us and just approve it, and, you know, we're, we're, we're up here thinking about longevity and, and what it looks like, so I think it was a good conversations regarding it. Um. I would like, I, and I wrote this down right when we were having this issue, can we do something, um, about our PA system? It's been, um, I've had people say they want to watch the meetings, and they get frustrated because they hear one or two, and then they can't hear somebody else, and they get frustrated, and they shut it off on YouTube. Um, I don't know what, how, how we fix it, I mean, I know that that mic, huh, mic, mic that you used, um, you know, I mean, it's really quiet, it's hard to hear, and, uh, so that, that, that's one of them, I'd like to see if, if there's, I mean, I don't know what we ended up doing with the, our CARES Act dollars or that were slotted to go for the council chambers, if all that money's gone, if we spent it on these two TVs, or uh, what we've done, I mean, I know there's other things, I'm not, I'm not flippantly saying, saying that, I'm just, but, and then secondly, um, I, I would like to get to where we're reducing this to where it's more user-friendly on our computer. I don't know how we do that, if, if we need to do something that we're able to navigate it ourself, um, and then work, so we're not fumbling through forty pages of paper, and I think that just be, ju- just eliminating the paper being green, um, would also be a good thing to do, and that's all I have.
Well, and, as you know, we do, we do provide these in PDF, and we generally print them, because back and forth, we've had, please print us packets, and so, uh, we, we can certainly, I mean, if somebody wants to print and print it, somebody doesn't, I would say there are some, and we haven't really pursued them, and I, I think where you're, where you're, and I apologize, but I think I, where you're going with on packets, there are some software companies out there that specialize in the agenda process, right, and so, uh, you, so when you say, I can say go to page twelve, and you can go to page twelve, right, and some of those, I know they're, obviously there's expenses with it, but we can explore, I mean, there are some technologies out there that pretty much turn your package system into only an electronic packet, but it, it, you know, a PDF is fine, but it just, it just pages, scanned pages effectively.
And it gets distorted, and like you were saying, to zoom in, to zoom out.
So, so there's ones where it's like, you know, to say, agenda item A, and then it has, you know, it may have, it's a resolution and, and da-da, and, and so it just structures it, and, and there are several companies out there, and even in our region, uh, that we can look, look to, I, I know they reach out to us, you know, we get contact, especially after every, uh, uh, conference and things, you know, we get inundated with, we've got the latest, greatest thing that's gonna save everybody, everything. But we haven't really looked at it, but we can certainly follow up and, and bring it back, I think it would be a, a nice addition, uh, we just haven't done it.
And it might not be something, anything we can afford, I don't know if it is or not, you know, until, until it's brought to us, we don't know.
Yeah, we'll do some research.
There were a couple of pages were missing in mine.
Right.
And, and I was trying to follow it, and I didn't have a page.
Yeah, the, where page numbers were, were not on all the items in the document.
And, and I, and I think it looks, I'm not putting, I'm not throwing anybody under, it looks unprofessional. You know, for us to set up, where, what, where are you at, zooming in, can you zoom in, what?
Thank you.
If, before we leave, um, our mayor has received a very notable honor over the weekend from the League of Kansas Municipalities, the EA Moser Excellence in Local Government Award is presented this tenth day of October, twenty twenty-one, to John McTaggart, mayor of city of Edwardsville, in recognition of his outstanding public service and commitment to a strong local government. Signed Eric Satorius, Executive Director, congratulations, Mayor.
Thank you very much, I, uh, I shared this award. It is, uh, it was quite an honor, it really is, because all these years I've been on the board, I've I've, I've seen and, and heard of, of other recipients of the EA Moser Award, and it is very prestigious, and, but I I wanted to make note that I shared this award with Carl Gerlock from the city of Edward Park, so there were, this is the first time in history that they awarded two of them, and it was really an honor, big time. Thanks, I have nothing further to add, so we are adjourned.
Congratulations.
Yes, thank you.